Councilor Catele Jordan?
Here.
Councilor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Councilor Randall?
And Councilor Straw?
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any reports or correspondence that any councilors wish to give? Councilor Jordan?
I do. I just want to, I don't know if other people have been noticing this, but I just want to give a shout out to Chief Fenton because I've noticed so many of his outreach to the community that really gets the officers out of the cruisers and connected with people. And I saw one of the events they did at the school with kind of a mock crime scene and the CSAL and cops meetup that's going to be happening. And I just think we need to recognize that approach to police work in our town. So, thank you. Paul Fenton.
Thank you. And I concur. Any other reports or correspondence from anybody? Seeing none, move on to the Finance Committee report. Councilor Straw?
So, you should all have in your packet the appropriation control, the revenue control, the revenue distribution, and the expense distribution. And we all should have received this evening a copy of the financial dashboard. I had asked Matt to update the unassigned fund balances on the bottom to reflect the most recent year. So, it kind of spells out the trend we've had of the rising unassigned fund balance that we'll be dealing with when we get to the actual budget. So, as Matt will be covering in the very near future here, you all have your budget binders as well. We will be having our initial workshops starting next week as we work through the municipal budget. Otherwise, myself and Councilor Garvin have been in communication with the school board and working hand-in-hand with them to help bring both of the budgets together and look for where we can find some potential one-town concept benefits, which we'll be talking about as part of that budget review process. Does anyone have any questions on any of that? With that, I turn it back to Councilor Garvin.
Anything you wanted to add, Matt, before you have your manager's report?
No, sir. I'll be speaking a bit on many of those subjects shortly. Thank you for your opportunity.
Seeing no other questions for Chris, is there anybody here in the public that wishes to speak something that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to that monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Councilor Straw had mentioned, this evening I have delivered to the town council the fiscal year 2020 annual budget for your review over the next couple of months to work on. I'll give you a brief introduction for that this evening. What we're looking at right now is this year's municipal budget for fiscal year 2020. This budget, as proposed, would add 19 cents to the tax rate or 4.1 percent increase to the municipal portion. This budget includes all ongoing municipal department and community services. The total combined municipal and community services budget last year was $12,779,601, and this budget proposes a budget of $13,628,355 for an increase of $848,754 in spending or 6.6 percent. This is offset with revenue increase from other sources other than property taxes of $456,000 or 9.1 percent. The amount to be collected from property taxes is proposed to be $8,139,955, which is 5.1 percent more than last year. So, the first question is why is spending due to increase by 6.6 percent? $646,801 of the increase relates to personnel expenses. It's 76 percent of the total increase in the budget. It includes a 2 percent average wage increase as well as expansion from two to four per diem fire personnel, improving the town's safety coverage. There is an increase in the operating costs at the recycling facility due to increases at EcoMaine in their fees from $70 to $73 per ton on the tipping fees for household waste and a new fee this year for recycling fees at $35 per ton. There's also an increase in the legal budget due to the ongoing lawsuits. Personnel-related costs in total are about $6.99 million or about 51 percent of the total annual budget. The budget contains also significant capital item purchases in line with planned capital improvement planning. There's a planned replacement of the Public Works Department's bucket loader at an estimated cost of $250,000. Phase three of the Scott-Dyer Road reconstruction is planned to begin in the spring of 2020 and into the summer of 2020. That's why we need to budget for it this year at a cost of $650,000 and additional paving and drainage improvements at a planned cost of $300,000 estimate. We need, with the need of continuous coverage at the fire department, there's an anticipated expense of $75,000 to convert existing space at the Town Center Fire Station into two bedrooms, and the fire chief will be prepared to discuss this in his budget presentation. There's also an anticipated expenditure of $145,000 for emergency power generators to be installed at the Thomas Memorial Library and partial funding for a new generator at the middle school in Pond Cove in collaboration with the school department. Offsetting these increases in capital expense is the use of unassigned fund balance in the amount of $750,000 towards capital improvements, and it also contingent the use of $375,000 against annual operating expenses. This will lower the current amount of unassigned funds but will keep the overall level of unassigned funds properly in line with the current policy. Additional funding carryforwards from this current budget will also be used to offset the capital expense at $300,000. Finally, the Fort Williams Park Fund and Portland Headlight Fund will participate in funding at a capital expense of $160,000. Ultimately, with all the capital expenses which I have listed in my manager's message in the budget, to be raised by taxes will be $717,800. Finally, revenues from sources other than property tax are projected to have a net increase of $456,393, and residents have been buying newer motor vehicles and thus monthly collections have been improving. The budget projects $2.2 million in excise taxes, which is a $50,000 increase from the current year. One of the bright spots in the revenue budgets is community services revenues are strongly growing. This reflects our solid gains in their programming such as youth programming, Cape Care, and an increase in Richard's Pool fees, which is great to see after many years. Finally, in Governor Mills' estate budget, there's a forecast increase in revenue sharing, and revenues reflect a conservative estimated increase. One other area that is still open for discussion is Fort Williams pay and display parking fees, which is not currently included in the current revenues that we have forecast as I felt would be presumptuous for me to do that at this point in time before the council has decided where it would like to go. So, once we do have that, I can also make those adjustments as we go forward. And I think that is pretty much all I have to say about that. But it's, I want to say thank you very much to my department heads. They've done a great job putting these budgets together. We have done a total reconfigure of our capital planning, and I'll be providing a more substantial report as far as our next five years we have planned going forward. That's also to be in combination with the comprehensive plan as part of the long-term planning for the town. And we also have included in our capital planning that will be coming forward with the school projected capital planning as well going forward. So, the council and the town will have a more comprehensive picture as to where, what the long-term capital needs of the town will be. That being said, there are two other areas that we'll be bringing up during the budget discussions over the next couple of months as far as different operational areas that we may look at with recommendations where the town may consider. Some changes that will end up being to a positive effect to the tax rate, meaning that there are some areas that we can find more efficiencies, but there's some policy questions that we'll be bringing forward over the next, in next week's two different workshops on Wednesday and Thursday night relating to the budget. So, with that being said, I do want to thank all of our department heads for all the hard work they've done and to bring this forward and get it together with us on time, and I look forward to having discussions with the council as we go forward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Chris?
Two questions, just so we can set the narrative right now. So, as you noted, we're budgeting for a 2.5 percent local share from Augusta. If that was at 5 percent, would it be fair to say that we would have had a net zero increase on the municipal side of the equation or close to it?
Very close to it.
And then also, if we factored in the, any potential revenue from the pay and display trial run at Fort Williams, would it be fair to say we'd also be at close to a net zero on the municipal side as well?
Yes, if, based on the most recent forecast, that we were looking at an estimate of $300,000 in revenue from the pay and display proposal that we received, I mean, it's 318, I think was the number that they had, but if you use 300 as the number, you'd look at roughly a 1 percent net taxes or net revenues and expenditures and then roughly a negative amount if you were just looking at that on the net to the tax rate. So, instead of an 18 cent increase, you'd be looking at maybe a 1 to 2 cent drop. If you combine that with basically doubling where we're at right now in revenue sharing if the state actually funded at the levels that they were, that they had traditionally, then we'd be looking at a substantial drop in the tax rate.
Thank you. You're welcome. Other questions for Matt? Since we're talking about this, I will just point out and remind the public that we have our annual town council budget workshop scheduled for Wednesday, March 20th, and Thursday, March 21st. Those are both at 7:00 PM, and here at Town Hall will be in the Jordan Conference Room for those. Also, the school board has their next upcoming budget meeting the day prior to that on March 19th. That's at 6:30 PM. And I'm just double checking the location on that. That'll be at the high school, library, and learning commons. So, if you're following along with all of the current budget activity, those are some of the key dates that are coming up in the near term. If there are no other questions for Matt, we'll go to review of the draft minutes from our February 11th meeting. If everybody's had a chance to review, is there a motion to approve? Councilor Jordan is our second. Councilor Jordan, any discussion?
I have just a quick question.
Sure.
We had two people come and do a presentation on raising the floor. What happens now? I mean, they took their time to come here. Did they present to the school board as well, or where does, do we ever want to talk about it again?
So, we absolutely do want to talk about it again. Chris mentioned the meetings that he and I and the school board chair and the finance chair from the school board and Matt and the superintendent have been participating in. They did not receive the same presentation we did. I pointed them to the video of our meeting to refer to it if they were interested. At our last joint subcommittee meeting last week, though, I did bring this up to them as something of interest. It was among other topics that we discussed how to best engage our state senator and state representative on as well to see, you know, what movement and interest we could generate from them as well. I see one of those two people here tonight. And-
Chris, it was really helpful. It was very beneficial, and I think it was logical, makes a lot of sense.
Yep. And so, we also asked as part of that for Matt to reach back out to the town manager from Fayette, who was one of the two people that presented.
Yes, yep.
As he has an existing connection and, you know, open channel of communication with him. So, that's definitely something that we'll, I think, continue to monitor and pursue and see what makes sense as far as next steps go. Councilor Straw?
A small bit to add is, as of last week, I think we are still waiting for an LD or Legislative Document Number for the bill. Once we have that, then we can talk to our state rep and our state senator or otherwise take an action once we have something concrete to point out.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on the minutes themselves? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our first item on the agenda is number 54-2019, Request for Plogging Weeks. This is a request that came from the Recycling Committee. They've been discussing it at some recent meetings. Is there anybody that wants to come forward to speak on this item before we discuss it? Go ahead. Thank you.
So, I'm Bruce Rayner. I live at 309 Fowler Road, and I put the proposal to the Recycling Committee back in January. They had a vote on it in February, and it was a 5-0 approval. So, I want to thank the Recycling Committee for putting that forward and also thank the council for letting me speak tonight. So, I'll give you just a little bit of background on what the plan involves. It's also in the document that the Recycling Committee sent along to the town council. In terms of the formal proposal, what I'm suggesting is that the town designate two weeks a year as official plugging weeks. This would be the week around birthday in April and the week around Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. The idea is that we want community members to participate in the plugging activity to help to keep the roads, the trails, the beaches, the beautiful places that we all love and cherish in Cape as clean as possible. It's an opportunity to raise awareness about plugging. Runners do it, a number of runners do it fairly regularly. I have two of my good friends here, Steve Lee and Bob Dunphy. Steve is the president of the Main Track Club. He's not a Cape resident, but he's, we do have a number of members from the Main Track Club in Cape. And also Bob Dunphy, who's the Cape resident and the race director for the main marathon. Both of them know the value of plugging and in terms of its ability to not only integrate, not only get exercise but also to improve the quality of the environment. Plugging is a Swedish word, comes from ploggeup, and it's a combination of ploggeup and jogging, so it's a smash-up. And it's really taken off in the last half a decade. If you Google plugging, if you haven't already done so, it's everywhere. So, it's a fairly well-understood, well-recognized phenomenon, and it's something that runners and cyclists and walkers and trail users, I'm sure, know about. So, before I presented to the Recycling Committee in January, I decided to go for a plog myself. I do it fairly regularly. I'm a runner and a triathlete. So, I went out on Newsday. I live down at the bottom, the other end of Fowler. So, I left my house, went up to Barry Beach Road, took a left, and I jogged along the road to Crescent Beach entrance, the entrance to Crescent Beach. It was about a mile, and I plugged on both sides of the road on January the 1st. I collected 32 pounds of trash, including 54 removable bottles and cans, some pieces of styrene, styrofoam, which is a known car, two windshield wipers, and a lot of paper cut wood plastic. And I sorted it, and then I took it to the transfer station to get rid of it. That's just one day. Every time I go out, when I plug, I plug every run. When I do, I always fill up the bags that I take with me. Zoe Evans, who's a Cape High School student, sophomore, she is involved in creating a plugging program with the cross-country team. Every Friday in cross-country practice in the fall, Zoe would organize a plugging run for all the cross-country runners. I know because my daughter's on the cross-country team. Zoe's also trying to create a plugging phenomenon by having other cross-country teams integrate plugging into their own practice, their own training. And she's attested to the fact that, she plugs regularly, and she tested the fact that there's plenty of trash to pick up just about to touch it goes down. I think one of the most important things about plugging for Cape is our proximity to the ocean and the importance of keeping waste out of streams and waterways. As you all know, ocean plastics is a significant issue. Plugging is an informal activity, so there's no need for an organized plugging event. The idea for the plugging week is that runners and cyclists and walkers can go out at any point during that week and collect trash as part of the exercise. The idea would be for them to bring that trash to the transfer station. We would set up a container, maybe a six-yarder, at the transfer station to collect the plugging waste. We would then sort it and then dispose of it in the, at the dumpsters at the transfer Measuring the waste, I think, is a key component. It's something that Carol Law on the Recycling Committee strongly recommended because it allows us to get information about what's being thrown away, why it's being thrown away perhaps, and also communicate that to the community to try and get people to change One important component of the plugging week is communication, as I just mentioned, in terms of communicating the results to the local community. It's also, we can also communicate it to bike clubs and runners through the Main Track Club and other organizations to get them to participate. In terms of formal communication, we do it through the courier, signs at the transfer station, and also signs at local businesses. So, a little bit about me, I'm an avid athlete. I'm also the founder of a company called Athletes for Fit Planet. We work with road races and triathlons and bike rides and other types of events around the country to help them to improve their standards of sustainability. So, we work with the Boston Marathon, we work with the Houston Marathon, we work with the TD Beach to Beacon 10K. Bob, Steve, and I just came from the first OC meeting, the purchase committee meeting for the Beach to Beacon just now where Joni and Dave McGilvery were there. Beach to Beacon, as you probably know, is one of the most sustainable races in the country. It achieved Evergreen status as a sustainable event from the Council for Responsible Sport in 2016. It was the first race in the country to achieve that status, and we're going to be hoping to reapply for that status again this year. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm an environmentalist to the core, and any questions, I'm happy to take them. I think we have some, at least one person I know who would like to say something. Any questions for me?
First of all, thank you very much for that detailed overview. Are there any questions for Mr. Rayner, or are there others that would like to speak on this? Councilor Straw?
So, the specific ask for us tonight is that we designate the weeks of Earth Day and Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day as plugging weeks on an ongoing basis.
Correct.
Right.
If you want to adjust that a little bit, that's fine. But yes, those two, I mean, it's a spring cleanup and it's full. And aligning them with those two significant days, I think, is a nice sentiment.
Are there other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt, I have a procedural question to kind of follow up on Chris. Is there specific affirmative action that we need to do? I mean, I think it would, I like the idea and I'm supportive of it, but I just didn't know if there was actually specific action that's required of the council for this or simply endorsing it.
I think if you'd like to endorse it, that'd be, that'd be plenty fine, and we can make sure, to be honest, for us, just letting the Recycling Center know that during those couple of weeks, you might have a little bit more recyclable material that would be coming in from very healthy people. Yeah, that's a good thing.
Also, I talked about what we'll be doing, we'll create a team of volunteers to actually sort the waste.
Yep.
If there's any other components on the, on the-
Staff there.
-to do, so we'll assume that responsibility. Also, up to my company, I'll provide decks and blasks for any runners or anybody who wants to be cleaned up on the beach or whatever.
Great.
The only cost would be the six-yard container of the transfer station.
Okay. Did you want to add comments?
Yes. Hi, good evening. My name is Ann Carney. I live at 21 Angel Point Road. I'm here to speak in support of the plugging program. I think it's a really fabulous idea for a couple of different reasons. One is that I like to plog on Crescent Beach and Kettle Cove after a big storm because the waves churn up a lot of trash, and it's amazing how much plastic waste, golf balls, and other things you find, clothing you find on the beach after a storm, and it really is a significant pollution problem. And so, I just think it's a really great proposal from the perspective of cleaning up our beaches. The other reason I think it's really important is the potential for a program like this to raise consciousness both in our community and on a statewide basis. I'm a state legislator for House District 30 and introduced this session of bill on polystyrene food service containers, prohibiting use of them in many instances similar to Cape's ordinance. And at the hearing on that bill, there were still members of the Environmental and Natural Resources Committee who were denying that plastic waste is a problem here in Maine. And so, I think the more we can do as a coastal community and as a group of people who really care about the environment, the more impactful efforts locally and statewide will be to deal with what is a really significant environmental issue in our state and in our world, actually. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no other comment, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the proposal for designation of plugging weeks in April and October. Is there a motion? Councilor Jordan is our second. Councilor Deveraux? Any discussion? Councilor Randall?
I was just wondering, in terms of the timing, when are those dates when the Recycling Center has additional hours for, like, yard waste disposal? And do those align with either of these? Because that would be a nice thing, because I think, isn't it open on, like, Sundays during those time periods?
Mostly during the fall, because we have a lot of that, for a lot of yard waste in the fall is when, we can, it's generally around this time as well is when we have that happen. So, this would line up very well with that. And to be frank, also, around the Earth Day week is a really good time. We used to have a spring cleanup that would take place for years, and then due to budgetary constraints, it was taken away years ago. But I think, you know, the conceptually it lines up great in the spring and in the fall. I think it'll be very close to, if not overlapping, at the same time period. So, we should be in good shape.
I would add, the other thing that's, where it aligns well with the spring is you've got, if you had this in the last week or second-to-last week of April, then there's the e-waste collection day, e-waste and hazardous waste collection, and the Recycling Committee and the transfer station usually do a shredding day, too. So, you've just got a kind of a nice sequence of things happening over probably about a six-week period that thematically align to. Councilor Deveraux?
Since this is something that we're endorsing, will this be on our website? Can we put it on the website that these weeks are plugging weeks and advertise it to the residents that way?
I'm sure we can coordinate that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one other thing that this might align nicely with, I wasn't able to check the dates, is the Main Coast Week, which is organized by the Main Coastal Program, and it's usually right around the same time in October. So, perhaps we can make the connection to list this as an activity in Cape as it aligns with that effort as well.
I think that makes sense. I would probably turn those activities over to the Recycling Committee to coordinate. So, any other discussion? Matt, did you want to add something?
If any, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I've been working on, Wendy Derselik, who's our, basically our communication wizard who takes care of our website as well as so many different areas of our communication, is that we've been working, and we may be pushing out either this week or next, we have a number of folks who have subscribed for email blasts from the town. have a number of folks who have subscribed for email blasts from the town, and we're looking on a monthly basis to be putting all the headlines that took place, I meant to say this earlier in my report, but I got caught up in budget areas, but we're looking on a monthly basis to take all the headlines that were on the capeelizabeth.com website, consolidate them into like one, almost like, in a sense, a newsletter, and push that out to anybody who would like to subscribe to that. So anything along these lines, we'd have, this will probably be a story tomorrow, you know, Wendy does a great job putting all the actions of the council that have taken place at the council meeting, summarizing it on the website and pushing it out as a story. But if we do that on a monthly basis, we'll have a couple of different prongs, we can share that information with folks. In case they missed it on the website on one day, it'll be a headline that they'll receive, and if they're still interested, they can click on it and then access that info as a summary of the ceiling points that took place over the previous month. So we'll try to do that as well.
Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate your time. Next up is item number 55-2019, coastal 10, I'm sorry, Chapter 10 of the Coastal Waters and Harbor Ordinance Proposed Amendments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing nobody, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Penny Jordan, Chair of the Ordinance Committee, to introduce this item.
Basically, in October, the proposals from the Harbor Committee were moved to the Ordinance Committee to review things such as some simple wording things within this ordinance as well as addressing the definition of houseboat and outhaul. I learned a lot about outhauls, I learned a ton about moorings, and some other wording issues as well. And so basically, what we did was go through and look at the chapter and identify those areas where we would propose changes, and that is what we have in front of us this evening.
Great, thank you very much. So the action on this that we have for us tonight is to either refer this to an upcoming workshop, refer it back to the Ordinance Committee for any reason, or to set a public Is there anybody that would like to make a motion? Counsel Jordan?
I would make the motion that we move this forward to public hearing. I think that we did our due diligence as an ordinance committee. I think we had some great input from community members, and I think this represents the best foot forward for these items.
So you have a motion to set a public hearing. I presume that would be for the April 8th meeting of the Town Council.
Yep.
Is there a second? Counsel Randall, any discussion? Counsel Straw?
I just had four minor grammatical changes. Should we do that now before it goes or deal with it after, at the public hearing? Either way works for me.
Go ahead.
If I may through the chair, thank you. Counsel Straw was kind enough to supply his edits to myself and to Maureen and to Counselor Jordan today. Town Planner Maureen O'Meara has integrated his recommended changes, so we'll have that language available and ready for the public hearing if you're comfortable with that.
And specifically, it's just switching "for" witches to "that."
Great, thank you very much. I see no issue with that.
Jim, what did he say?
Switching the word "which" to "that."
Oh.
For grammatical purposes. Any other discussion? Counselor Gaberson?
I just had a question, whether there was any discussion. First of all, thank you. I think the committee did a great job looking through the ordinance and finding a number of places where you could use some modernization, so that's great. And I also appreciate the inclusion of the design standards for outhauls as part of the ordinance. I was curious if there was any discussion about including design standards for moorings, other types of moorings within the ordinance as well. It's a common feature of a lot of harbor ordinances, and I just was curious if that had come up as part of the process.
Just to clarify, you're asking if we wanted to put other mooring standards?
Well, a lot of harbor ordinances include design standards for moorings, more typically in towns that have a little bit more crowded mooring field than we do. But I was just curious if that had come up or if it's something that, you know, the ordinance committee thinks we should pay attention to or don't need to at this time.
Right, in the ordinance, it's, we have, the design standards are separate so that we don't have to change the ordinance every time we want to change the design standards. So as you can, like, just in the last five years, some of the standards have changed. So that would mean, instead of just the harbor master making the change, because the standard is now elevated and we need a better standard, then it would have to go through a whole process of an ordinance change. So it's just easier to put the language in that the standard is set by the harbor master who we vet and employ, and then they set the standard. So that did come up, and that's why we did continue to do it this way, yes.
Counsel Randall?
We also did have in Section 10-5-7, just like a very basic standard, but when the harbor master came in, he went over some of the standards he uses. He brought in, I think he brought in, like, visuals, and it seemed to be more helpful to defer that to him.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to set this item to a public hearing for April 8th at 7:00 PM. All those in favor? opposed? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you to the ordinance committee for your work on that and for the Harbors Committee that originally brought that forward. Next item is number 56-2019, the Finance Director Appointment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this?
I'm Shannon O'Meara, 18 Ivy Road. I actually have a statement and then a question, if I could ask a question. First, the statement is, thank you for creating and finding somebody for this position. I think it's a fantastic idea. The second, or my question is, can you give a little information on the responsibilities, like a job description, and maybe there's something out online, but specifically, what is the scope of the Finance Director's job? Is it just the town or the town and the school? And does he have authority, influence, final word in anything? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for your questions and your comment. We have talked about this before, that very point, both in workshops and meetings, but happy to reiterate. The position does report to the town manager, and so I'm going to defer to Matt to give a description as he's sitting here. I know that we also do have an actual job description that I think has been posted as part of previous meeting materials, because we approved the job description at one point. So we can certainly comb the meeting materials archive to pull that up for you, too. But Matt, did you want to just sort of narratively answer, and I think specifically the question, oh, there you go.
Never mind.
Narratively speak, though, to the question, which I think a lot of other people have too, about the separation of responsibilities between the municipal and school side of the house.
As Ms. O'Meara now has the job description in hand, I'll forego doing that full description for you, but we do have that available at the archives at the council. If you have questions, please don't hesitate to give me a call, too. I'd be happy to talk to you about that. Yes, this position is strictly on the town side, on the finance end of it. For years, we have worked with the school as well, but roughly what we've found is, over time, both avenues have become larger. The reporting requirements are greater, as well as the level of work that needs to take place to do both positions. And we felt at this point, we've grown to the size that we need to have the Finance Director for the town and the Business Manager would still stay on the school side. To be honest, a lot of the work that we've done on the finance side, I've done, and before me, Michael had done that. And now to actually get it done properly is, we just need another set of eyes and a person with the skills and the abilities to understand what, you know, we want to do it right. And I found a gentleman, quite frankly, who's right behind you, a few rows back, who met all of those characteristics that we were looking for in the position, with multiple years of experience in the city environment, on the government lending environment, at a small-town environment, he checked all the boxes. So we're very extremely, well, extremely gratified with our selection, and it was a universal, unanimous decision of the Hiring Committee as well through the process. So that's why we're here this evening and have this here, just to bring everybody up to date as well as get to work. I hope that meets your questions.
On the question of involvement of the school, the only thing I would add to that, and thank you for that, Matt, is, you know, the charter and the organizational structure are pretty clear about, you know, reporting responsibility and roles and accountability and things like that. I think, as we've talked a lot about in the last year and beyond, there's a desire to, on both the school board side and the town council side, to find efficiencies where we can, employ best practices where we can, come up with creative new ideas that, you know, where they didn't exist before. I think there's an expectation, even though the position reports to the town manager and won't specifically be doing any work for the schools, that's very clear, but I think, you know, with both operations existing here in the same office building, meetings like Chris and I are participating in, I think there's a hope and a desire that there will be a halo effect, if you will, that we reap the benefit of. So anybody else want to add anything to that? Go ahead.
One other, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do, we will be sharing other staff members between the two departments. Like, we still have a payroll person and accounts payable person, you know, accounts payable, accounts receivable, and our personnel slash HR person also will work. You know, we're still sharing those resources because we don't need to have two operations writing checks from the same building. So we still find those efficiencies, we just needed to, you know, find a little bit more specialized professionalism. Plus, we, as Chairman Garvin said, we will be collaborating with the school. I mean, it gives us another set of eyes and another person who can also help us maybe find better opportunities and solutions as we go forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we kind of have a two-step agenda process on this. The first item is to actually amend the Personnel Code to include the position, and then the second is to confirm the appointment. So the first item is number 56-2019, like I said. So I'm looking for a motion to amend Chapter 3 of the Personnel Code to add the Finance Director position to Appendix A for the Town of Cape Elizabeth salaried positions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Counsel Jordan is our second. Counsel Randall, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Great. So secondly, item number 57-2019. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak again? So the town manager has led a recruitment process for this. I'll turn it over to him to talk about the very qualified candidate that he just was referring to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'd be so kind, I'd like to invite John Corduro to come up to the podium over here, and that way you can get a good look at him. Luckily, I did take a heroic leap today and asked him to have today be his first day, and he stayed here all the way through, and he's planning on coming back tomorrow. So I'd say we've been successful to get things started. Jumped him in this morning to both the Personnel Advisory Committee meeting and our department head meeting, so he's had the opportunity to meet all the department heads who could attend this morning, and we've shown him around the building, got him set up. But I'll give John the opportunity, he does a great, a better job than I do of describing his expertise, and you get a chance to hear him. So, John, please.
Oh, my goodness, I didn't realize I was going to have to do this. Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, members of the public, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. My name is John Corduro. I was most recently the treasurer of the Town of Gunwood. I spent five years there. Unfortunately, if you pay attention to newspapers, you will see that there are a lot of terrible things going on down there, and I must say, I'm very pleased to be able to leave and come to a community that is much better run and is much more cohesive in moving forward. So thank you very much for that opportunity. In terms of background, I've been doing this work for about 40 years. I've been a finance and administrative director for a cap agency. I've been a school business manager for a school district in Maine and New Hampshire. I've been a finance director for the cities of Stockholm and Bangor. I spent 15 years working on the banking side as a government banking officer and carried territory from Maine down to Philadelphia. I worked with state governments and large state universities. I was also the CFO for Efficiency Maine in 2010 when they were separated from the PUC. I've done a lot of this stuff, a lot of things. I've seen the same sort of thing any number of times, so there isn't anything that I would expect to see that I haven't seen someplace else before. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and I look forward to a long and successful time together.
Thank you very much. Your credentials are quite impressive, and we're looking forward to a good relationship working with you as well, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for John? Great, thank you very much. As was noted in the agenda, for the balance of this year, the salary and benefits for this position will be funded through the unassigned fund balance, but will then transfer over to the administration and benefits accounts. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to confirm the town manager's appointment of John Corduro to serve as the first Finance Director of the Town of Cape Elizabeth effective March 11th. Salary of $87,500 plus benefits, as I just said, will be paid from the unassigned fund balance through the remainder of this fiscal year. Is there a motion? Counsel Straw is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, any discussion? Counsel Deveraux?
I just have a question about the salary plus benefits to be paid through June 30th. So is that $87,000 going to be paid through June 30th, or are you, the way it's worded, it looks like $87,000 is going to be paid through June 30th? Is that what's happening?
Please, yep.
Counsel Deveraux, great question. It would be prorated, so going forward, there would be the annual salary, but over, you know, up until June 30th, so it's approximately $40,000 salary plus benefits.
Okay, so it is prorated, it's not the entire?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? That'd be a great job if I could get it for a couple months. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, John. See you tomorrow.
Bright and early.
He is coming back.
Item number 58-2019, Statement of Policy Boards and Committees, Barring the Appointment of Town Employees from Serving on Standing Boards and Committees, Proposed Amendments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, Counsel Straw, would you like to introduce this item?
So a town employee had previously asked that we revisit the policy on board and committee appointments, questioning whether it should be as broad as it was, and we had our initial workshop where we discussed whether there was a consensus, and it seemed like there was a consensus, about making the language a little tighter and more specific on the restrictions so that it had a more rational basis to it. And we now have language that came out of that process, and I think it's now scheduled to go to another workshop because of the proposal.
Yes, Counsel Deveraux, I apologize, I misidentified the Chair of the Boynton's Committee.
Oh, okay. I was like...
I didn't, I looked down this end of the table, I had Counsel Deveraux on my mind, and I just, Chris, your face just jumped out at me, and so...
That's fine.
No intentional oversight, and I appreciate the work that you and Matt did to craft this language, and I apologize.
No, that's totally fine, because Counsel Straw was the one who did bring it to our attention.
Yes, but...
And Matt Sturgis and I worked on it, and as you can see, we added, we wanted to make it clear that it's Cape residents only, and unless anyone has any questions about it, do we need to workshop it again, or?
I have questions.
Oh, you do.
But do we need a motion for it?
We can either propose a motion to accept it and discuss then, propose a motion to refer to a workshop. All those items are available to us.
Do you want me to ask my questions first, and then we can make the decision?
Sure.
I don't know.
What's your question?
Actually, I have several. And I say this because the first one, only residents of the Town of Cape Elizabeth only can serve on these committees? I will tell you, there's a history that that hasn't always held true. We have John Green, who served as Chair of the FOSP, and I believe he was not a citizen of Cape at the time, but he represented one of the knowledge of one of the largest landowners in Cape Elizabeth. And so I don't know... of the knowledge of one of the largest landowners in Cape Elizabeth. And so, I don't know if there's a way that we want to have on appointments and, you know, the committees, et cetera, that there may be an advisory member or something, because those things can happen. The other thing is, is that on FOSP, there were members representing several committees in town that had land interests, whether it be SALT, or Cape Farm Alliance, or I can't remember the other two. But those committees are not necessarily town committees, and so therefore have members that are not citizens of the town. So, I just don't know how we want to play that. So, I throw that question out. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that one now, or the next question I had was on item three, which it's about an actual or perceived conflict of interest. Perception is a person's view. We have had experiences where some people may have a perception that a person who's interested in being on Harbors Committee or some other, you have too much of an interest, and you're going to be biased towards certain things. And so, perception, to me, is a word that creates a slippery slope. And so, we may need to temper this somehow. And those were probably my two major questions.
Okay. I think, given the questions, it probably makes sense to refer this to a workshop. So, is there a motion to refer this to our March 18th workshop?
So moved.
Counsel Straw, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is item number 59 dash 2019, a vacancy on the Conservation Committee with the Appointments Chair, Counsel, oh, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? No. Would the Appointments Chair, Counsel Deveraux, like to introduce this?
Sure. We were told that Mark Fleming had resigned from the Conservation Committee due to scheduling conflicts. So, the Appointments Committee met. We conducted interviews, and we were all very impressed with Philip Saussier. He has impeccable credentials, and it was an unanimous decision. Is there?
Great. Would you like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Saussier?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Saussier to the Conservation Committee.
Great. Is there a second? Counsel Straw, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you for your time and service, Mr. Saussier. Look forward to working with you on the Conservation Committee.
He's already in there doing it.
Great. Get to it. Item number 60 dash 2019 is the Annual Report on the Property Tax Assistance Program. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? There is not. Would the Tax Assessor come forward and give us a presentation, please?
I'd like to apologize. I don't have my good singing voice covering from a cold. Yes, this is the first annual report on the 2019 Senior Tax Relief Program that the Council approved in January. Last fiscal year, we earmarked $75,000 for the program, and I'm pleased to announce that through, oh, just earlier this week, we've approved 132 applicants. And of the $75,000, we have dispersed $64,407 to our seniors who applied. And that leaves us the remaining fund of $10,593 to roll into the 2020 fiscal year. I only had to deny one application, and that person, well, I won't get into it, but anyway. And I really want to say that, you know, I met all 132 of these applicants. They came into my office, and what a wonderful group of people. They were so appreciative of the program, and they, you know, they were very thankful. And, you know, I got some emails, and I forwarded those on to the councilors. But, very nice. It made me feel really nice to be a part of the program. So, I want to thank you all again for helping get that underway, and I want to thank my office staff, who helped a lot of the people who came in, and the AP people who had to do a little extra work to get the checks done. But, you know, it was all worth it. So, hopefully, next year's budget, we can see a minor, you know, increase in that pot, because neighbors are talking to neighbors, and it's going to become more popular. So, any questions?
So, that dovetails to what I wanted to ask two things. Is number one, are there things that you, at this point, would recommend as changes, or even if not changes to the program, any sort of lessons learned that you can share?
Maybe simplifying the application a little bit, and that's something that we can do on an administrative end. But really, you know, it had some moving parts, but I think all the parts worked really well. I didn't have to deny maybe a handful of people whose income was above $60,000. And I think it worked really well. And those people who did get denied, I encouraged them. I said, well, you know, you might have been denied, but please talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends. They may be qualified for it. So, they helped spread the word. And also, I want to thank the Cape Elizabeth South Portland Rotary Club. I went there and spoke, told them about the program, and they helped push the information out. So, a shout-out to the Rotary Club.
The other question I had, you referenced the assistance from the accounts payable folks to push out the checks. Is there, and we may have discussed this previously, and I just don't remember, but is there benefit or efficiency to, instead of issuing checks, have it be a credit on their tax statement, or is that?
I think we discussed that in the ordinance committee level.
Okay.
And it was determined that it's better off to give them the check. They may have other struggles in their lives, medical bills, or other things that they might need to address. So, as difficult as it is administratively, it's probably worth it just to get them the checks in their hand.
Okay. Are there other questions? Counsel Straw?
Two questions. The first, based on inquiries you received, and then actual applicants and whatnot, just generally, did you find, or did you have the impression that the durational residency requirement we imposed of 10 years served as an impediment for applications, or did you find it wasn't much of an issue?
No, I didn't have to deny anyone for their 10-year residency. I initially denied one. I said, oh, you've only been in your home for seven years. And she called me back and said, yeah, but that house has been on leased land, and I've lived there for 35 years, sonny. It's like, okay. Then you are approved. So, but no, nobody else has missed that window at all.
All right. And the second was, we didn't put any asset threshold in. So, is it your sense that that's anything we need to kind of keep an eye on, or be concerned about with people with, let's just take an extreme number, million-dollar house valuations that are applying for the program?
Nope, I don't think so. I've got my data here in front of me, and the average land and building valuation is $265,000. So, it really is, you know.
We're getting who we were targeting.
Yeah, it's hitting the target real nice.
Any other questions? Counsel Gaberson.
Recognizing this is a very new program, I'm just curious if there were any patterns you noticed in when you were receiving applications. Did they kind of come in all in one lump, or did they sort of trickled in? And do you expect that to continue?
Well, they kind of trickled in. Then we got to the deadline, and, you know, there were some lines at the counter. And then, once the checks went out, I had two or three come in and say, well, my neighbor got a check. I think I'm eligible. So, I kind of, you know, extended the deadline a little and got them enrolled in the program as well. So, yeah.
Moving forward, where we have by annual tax billing, would you see there being any value in having deadlines that align with those tax billing cycles, or is an annual deadline just more efficient from the staff perspective?
Yeah, the annual deadline is better. What we're going to do, and what I've told everyone who's applied for the program, is, you know, I've got you in my database now. So, in the fall, probably around September, I'm going to mail all these people a new application. And then, they'll have from September until probably the middle of November to get those applications back to me. I could tabulate, approve them, and then get the report to the Council by the middle of December, right before the budget season for you guys really begins. So, that way, you'll have that information. And then, we can also get the checks cut around the new year and get them into people's hands probably in February. So, it's kind of a long process, but I think it's a good one. And having these people, it's going to be easy for me to just send them an application. So, thank you.
Counsel Deveraux.
I realize that a lot of everyone's seniors, but still, a lot of people are very computer-savvy now. Is there a way that we could make it a fillable form, like we do for the Appointments Committee, to where some people could just fill it, and it goes directly to you, so you're not mailing back and forth? Would that make things easier?
Not really. And really, it's not too big of a, not too big of a burden. A lot of seniors really aren't computer-savvy. You know, a lot of us might be, but a lot of them are not. I think I only mailed out maybe less than five applications. Most people either came into the office and got it when they came into town, or a few of them would download them off the website and bring them in. So.
But you just told us that you're going to mail them to everyone.
Yeah, yeah, all of them. Yeah. Well, that'll be, you know, one time to get the applicants out there. So, I just think it's more efficient sending them all on at once.
All right. Just something to think about, because those fillable forms that we have for appointments are really nice. Something to consider.
Matt, would you like to add something?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's also verification of the information that the assessor needs to do as far as income information as well. He does that at a personal level. They could fill it out at home, but they still need to bring that in, so Clint can verify that they qualify, and then they can almost get approved right on the spot. So, they almost, they know right there and then. But that's the only challenge, and they don't, you know, we don't want them to be sending something insecurely to the town. That way, they can bring it in, show it, turn around, and take it right back out with them. That way, it's more secure, and there's no opportunity for any of their personal information to be, you know, lost.
And speaking of confidentiality, what I've done is, every application I've taken in, I've given them a unique ID number. So, any reports that go to the Council is just going to have this unique ID number, and then the information, no address, no map and lot. You know, it's, I'm the only one who knows who these account numbers belong to. So, and I keep all those in a folder.
Where?
If we could audit it, I can give them to the auditors, but they are confidential. So, no one's going to take them anywhere. So.
Great. Any other questions for Clint?
Thank you.
Seeing none, is there a motion with our thanks and appreciation to acknowledge the report from the Tax Assessor?
So moved.
Counsel Gaberson, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Jordan, Counsel Benny Jordan. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the work on the program, Clint. Last is item number 61 dash 2019, our continued evaluation, continued work on the evaluation of the Town Manager, annual evaluation. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. We need a motion per the recommended motion here in the agenda to move into executive session. Could I have somebody please recite that? Counsel Straw.
I move that the Cape Elizabeth Town Council enter into executive session in conformance with 1 MRS Section 405 Subsection 6 Subsection A to continue the annual evaluation of the Town Manager.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Counsel Deveraux, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Great. We will adjourn into executive session. We will not be returning to public comment. So, unless there's anybody from the public at the conclusion of our executive session wishes to comment on something, but there's nobody here, so I'm guessing there won't be. So, with that, thank you very much.